Okay, it's six o'clock. We'll call the committee to order. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Peter? Roll call.
Councilwoman Inaudio.
Present.
Councilwoman Bachelor.
Present.
Councilwoman Peters.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitrovic.
Present.
Councilwoman Simons.
Present.
Councilwoman Meeks.
Present.
Councilwoman Riley.
Present.
All present.
First thing on the agenda is the public hearing for residency qualifications for appointed officials. And this is changing the residency requirements. Is there anyone here to speak at that public hearing? There be no one. We'll close that public hearing at 6:01. Next thing is the second public hearing, and this is a public hearing on the change in code section 225-2, which deals with the composition of the administrative appeals panel. To expand that, is there anyone here to speak at that public session? Okay, there be no one. We'll close that at, I think it's probably 6:01 and a half. Next thing on the agenda is the public session. And at this time, anyone can comment on any city issue. You have three minutes to speak. We're not allowed, according to the common council rules, to respond to anyone. And disparaging comments aimed at any person or public official is prohibited. Is there anyone here to speak at the public session? Thank you.
My name is Benjamin Robinson. I'm here on behalf of the actions that just happened in Glover'sville with the police. I think it was very unfair. We have a problem. Glover'sville is no different than any other city in this country. We have a drug problem. We have a crime problem. It's not singling us out. Sheriff Apple was on TV today saying that 80 residents, 80 people, everyone in the quarter in Albany have died over drug overdoses. And we all know that the Capitol has a terrible crime rate. He didn't lose his job. Sheriff Jardino is on Fox TV. Where I'm from, we have a drug problem. It's sweeping the country. And we have a crime problem, and we have a drug problem. Nobody asked for his resignation. This man did not hurt this city. He did not hurt this city. Everybody that lives anywhere knows that we have this problem. We had a chance to turn this city and to be brave. Could have looked into that camera and stood by him and said, yes, we know we have a drug problem. You sell your drugs in our city, and we're going to find you, and we're going to take you out. We're going to prosecute you to the full extent of the law. You're not going to walk away. And you do it over and over. We're going to find you, and we're going to hammer you. But no, we didn't do that. We didn't do that at all. We had a chance to tell those people that are continuously getting, the police are running to save their lives. It's a disease. It's a sickness. Reach out to us. We see you. Reach out to us, and we will reach back because that's what Glover'sville is. That's the residents of Glover'sville. We have been down before, and we're back, and we're going to come back. You've done good work. I don't want you to resign. I just disagree with this one thing you've done. I just disagree with that. And I'm disappointed in that. I really am. I just think it's wrong. We could have reached out to those people. They have to reach out to us first. Excuse me, mayor, I'm talking. I want you to look at me. I do that respect to you. Reach out to those people and say, listen, we're done. We're done with this drug stuff. You have to reach out to us, and we'll reach back to you, and we will help you. We will make you a productive citizen of this city. But we didn't do that. We fired somebody. We lifted up the corner of the rug, and we swept it under the rug. And that's not you. I know that's not you. I just know it. I've seen your actions before, and that's why I'm here. Because I don't know what happened to the man that I voted for. I have voted for you. I've supported you. I believe in you. Right now, I think I may have made a mistake. I hope I didn't. It's not you. I know he's not coming back. I know it's a done deal. And if you have people on Main Street that want to open up businesses and for something like this, they decide not to do it, go find Utopia. Show me where it is. Show me a place that doesn't have the problems that we have.
All right, it's three minutes. You have to sit down.
Of course.
Anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing?
Good evening. I just want to say on behalf of myself and a lot of residents who couldn't be here this evening, we are disappointed. We are disappointed. As one of the residents of this city who goes to every NEU event we have, who goes to every, every meeting in regards to our citizens, to just force the chief's resignation is beyond, it's beyond. I mean, you can't honestly say that that was worth it. Sure, he should have been in trouble for the videos and such, but to force his resignation, he retired 25 years. I forgot. This is how we send him? This is how we're going to send him out? I really, really hope, people are saying, oh, it's a done deal, and it's a done. I haven't heard officially from the person, the mayor or anybody, saying he is officially fired, resigned, or anything. I want to know. I want to know. Y'all know the answers to these questions, and we have the right to know. Don't pull us along with the, he's at work, he's working from home. Tell us the truth. Let the citizens know.
I'm town all the time. My name is Jennifer Rassikott. I work for Captain Human Services. I don't reside in Glover'sville. I work in the church around the corner on Fulton Street. But we see a lot that happens in the community, and we go to the neighborhood engagements. We go to the functions. We go to everything because of our work. And I've seen Chief Clay there, everything. I've watched him. I've seen his actions. I've seen what he's done for the community, and I respect him. And all I can say is I am very, very disappointed.
Anyone else?
My name's William Robek. I live at 93 First Avenue. Chief Clay, in the last three to four years, has worked diligently, diligently, getting 30, 20 to 30 different organizations together to do the neighborhood engagement group they had there. Last year, we went to all six wards, and we reached out to all the residents, handed out pamphlets. There were some council members that were showing up like that. There was other ones, when we knocked on doors, they asked what we were doing there for. You know, we, the residents, feel that this is a bad mistake. A bad mistake. Our men and women in our police force and our firefighters are out there every day diligently protecting and serving the residents of the city of Glover'sville. They are given Narcan once, twice, three, four times. You know, and I would like to ask any of these council members or even the mayor if any of them have actually gone to the police department or the fire department and thanked our men and women for going above and beyond. It's just, you know, and I think the residents need transparency in this government, really do. And it would be really nice to hear from our council members and the mayor of actually, who actually asked for Chief Clay's resignation.
We've talked before at one of the community things in my backyard, the park. We addressed the drug addiction and the actions that go on. It took eight months to get a light out there. Grandkids can't play out front because we are on James Street in Glover'sville. We have one of the biggest drug houses in the city, and you know it. Overdoses, the raids, the kidnapped guy that almost died, you guys have known this. We've complained. It's not a secret. The police say our hands are tied. Why are their hands tied? Why are these drug houses being allowed to operate? Kids can't play out front. We have a drug house. Can't play out back because we have the park. Where when they leave the drug house, that's where they go. We've been dealing with this now. I've been there 10 years. The whole neighborhood is upset. No, you talk to us. You fed us a really good line to get the vote. Where did it get us? Measures? Did anybody do anything? No, because you're making so much money off the people that leave those houses. I bought a house in this community to raise my grandkids. Where I grew up. I came back here from South Carolina to raise grandkids here. And I'm so sorry I did that. I hope you do better.
Oh, right, right. I forgot about that. Is that the only one?
Yeah, that's the only one.
Ma'am, could you, ma'am that spoke last, could you state your name and address? Okay, thank you.
Louis Lumberdoni. I live on 99 Newman Street. And my concern is the home next door. I think you're going to destroy it. I was just wondering if you knew how far it was on the list? Because someone came to my door, and they actually went into the house. And that house is not safe at all. Gate in the front, both the driveway gate and the house gate are unlocked. So vehicles are driving in there, and they're looking at the house, thinking it's for sale. My curiosity was, I was just wondering how far it is. Oh, you have a lot of properties to take down.
Could you tell me what the address is, please?
97 Newman.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Oh, right, right, yeah. Okay.
How you doing, mayor? I don't want to point any fingers here. I just want to kind of offer maybe-
Name and address, please. Name and address, please.
Joe Dematty, 83 Division Street, Glover'sville. Don't want to point no fingers or anything. Just want to kind of maybe offer some sort of different solution. The drugs are kind of like a big business for everybody because it's the only business going. How about we try to recruit business into our industrial parks, give another business instead of drugs? Maybe we have some business here that offers a gainful employment. Maybe we could find new employment for our kids. That's all.
Thank you.
Good evening. Matthew Traynor, 102 Prospect Avenue. Been a homeowner here in the city of Glover'sville for over two decades. I've raised my children here. You know, I'm a practicing attorney, practicing almost exclusively in criminal law. I was appalled by this body's reaction to Chief Clay's press release, whatever you want to call it. It is the duty of the chief of police to protect the citizens of the city against the dangers of the criminal element. My mind, what he did was no different than issuing a press release that there was an individual in the city who had randomly stabbed some people, unidentified as yet, warning the people of a danger. When I started my career in the Fulton County DA's office, I learned very quickly that of the controlled substances offenses, at that time, the three most dangerous substances were crack cocaine, methamphetamine, and heroin. Many, many, many people become addicted after just a single use. None of those substances hold the candle to fentanyl, which is now circulating. And in fact, now, I've recently been working in the federal public defender's office representing people charged with federal crime. And many of my clients now are charged with possession or with the intent to distribute many of those substances, and they're also mixed with fentanyl. There have even been reports about marijuana that has been seized, still illegal under federal law. It's laced with fentanyl. When I was a teenager, nobody could have died by smoking too much marijuana in a single night. Nowadays, they can. This is a horrible danger, and ignorance is only going to cause more people to die from this sort of stuff. I've seen it too often. I've had clients who overdosed while I represented them. It is such a horrible plague. And Glover'sville is not the only community that this has, that has had to face this sort of thing. And I think that when Chief Clay provided that access to the news so that people could see firsthand what's happening everywhere, not just in Glover'sville, not just in New York, across the country, of the things that people go through, it's, he was just doing his job. And as far as not including other things, I mean, that's not, his job is to point out the dangers of criminal law. I was very disappointed at how this body responded, and I hope whoever is appointed as chief of police not hesitate to warn the citizens of this city of the dangers that it faces.
My name's Douglas Addy. I live at South McNabb Ave. My concern is the vacant lot on the corner of McNabb and Second Street. The city appears to be using that as a dump site for road millings and other construction debris. My concern is, A, is it authorized as a dump site? Is it zoned for a dump site? If so, has it met the EPA or DEC regulations as far as contaminating of the creek that's right there and/or the soil? My concern and a couple of my neighbors, they're in and out of there from sunup to sundown, dump trucks. And there's a mountain there, mayor. It's got to be probably, no exaggeration, 20, 25 feet tall. So I was just concerned as far as if that's going to be a continuance of a policy that the city's going to do, or they're going to use that vacant lot as a dump station, or if so, what can we do about it?
Evening, Robin. Wentworth, 3 Orange Street. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but as I'm listening to the other speakers, I'm thinking that I really should. And the reason that I want to speak is because I want to publicly thank Chief Clay, the Glover'sville Police Department, Glover'sville Fire Department, for the work they do every single day that most of us have no idea what they do. Three weeks ago, I was in this building for a meeting, sat in the meeting room at the front of the building. A pickup truck pulled into the parking lot, and a woman came screaming down the hallway, screaming, "My husband is in the truck, dying." A few of us got up. I went to the truck. The man was slumped over on the passenger side. I knew immediately that it was an overdose. Another one of the people, it takes longer to tell this story than what actually happened. Another one of the people at the meeting went over to the fire department, got some of the firemen from over there. The woman ran down the hallway. A few minutes later, a group of police officers came. They attended to the man. The woman came out screaming and said to me, "They need to arrest the man who, I just stopped at his house, he gave my husband something, he took it." I said, "Did he take something?" She said, "Yes, he did." I said to the officers, "She just told me he took something." I watched them pull the man out of the truck, Narcan him twice to revive the man. He barely had a pulse. The man was, received Narcan twice. He got up, got into the truck, and they drove off. I want to publicly thank Chief Clay, whether he's still chief or not. I want to thank him for the work he's done in this city. And it's a shame that this could not have been resolved. If you didn't like the video that he was part of, there should have been a conversation, not a public display, not a, this has been just horrible. This whole thing that's going on right now is more of an embarrassment than the fact that we have, like every other city in this country, a drug problem. I want to thank him. I want to thank the police department and the fire department and EMS for what they do every single day. And I want people to understand what it is they do.
Good morning, or afternoon. My name is Cecilia Jeanette. I live at 68 Yale Street. I'm a new resident of Glover'sville. I moved in just before the pandemic. It's the first time homeowner. I invested a life savings to buy that property. If I look at this panel, this is the first time I'm in person, but I've been following you during the pandemic remotely, it is not a representation of Glover'sville. You are not the diverse people that I see walking around on the streets when I'm walking to the dollar store. You are not the people I see when I'm in the market, okay? We need to be more engaged with this community. I apologize that I have not been more participatory during the COVID. And equally, I work full-time, so I am not available during many business hours to participate and after-school hours. I have my young son here with me. You know, that requires my attention after-hours. But entrusted in you as public servants, you need to step up and represent Glover'sville as the city that you claim to be constantly on public posts because you really act like a small town that doesn't know the difference between what is right and what is wrong. There's a drug problem. I'm not pro-chief. I'm not anti-chief. I don't see cops walking a beat. I don't see people responding in appropriate times to domestic violence calls that I have made, knowing and finding out afterwards people were hospitalized. This is in my yard. I can hear it through the walls of the house next door. There are drug issues. There are gun issues on my front door cam. I have had a gun run past my front door. Very discouraging to have invested a life savings to buy property in a city, to be sitting here and having a meeting about a chief being fired because he reports Narcan. You have to prioritize making life work for families that are working and coming to the city. You're not going to build it by making the downtown painted fresh. I actually lived in Beijing just before the Olympics came. Funniest thing, you're driving on these big highways, and they're painting all the buildings. You walk on the street, they were little huts that were people's homes. You're not looking at the lives that you're affecting. You're looking at it as, I think one speaker, don't remember who said it, there's money, you're getting a grant, you're making that happen. You have to invest. That it's your neighbor. It's your community. It's a collective to make a change, not my priority, your priority, your priority. We're living here together. Let's work together. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak at public session? We'll close the public session at 6:24. Next thing on the agenda is the audit. Councilman-at-Large Peters and Councilwoman Inaudio performed the audit on September 23rd for the period August 18th to September 22nd.
Checks processed. The A Fund total is $1,490,059.23. The G Fund total is $157,072.31. The H Fund total is $59,334.49. T Fund total is $802,993.26. The grand total is $2509,459.29. Checks to be processed are, A Fund total, $464,550.66. The G Fund total is $26,521.48. T Fund total is zero. The H Fund total is $235,175.76. And a grand total of $726,247.90.
I make a motion to approve the audit as read.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Okay, the only thing I have to say is that we have three executive sessions at the end of the meeting. The first one is for contracts and agreements, and it has to do with the contract, the bids that we received relative to the multi-site demolition. The second one is personnel, and the third one is personnel. Okay, so that'll be at the end of the meeting. Chief Graff?
I just want to say I really appreciated the memo you sent us. It was very helpful. It was very clear.
Anything else for Chief Graff? Okay, Joni. Questions for Joni? Okay. Mary Ann?
Can I go back to Joni? Joni, do you want to explain to the council about what's happening with the potential assessor hire? Because I sent out a memo to everybody saying we'd be meeting him today.
Oh, yes, I believe, he's going to come in next week to meet everyone. Next Tuesday, I believe.
Yeah, I'm hoping. We have to see if the council can meet.
Yeah, that's one of the things that we wanted you to meet, the person that's been, you know, we're looking at the top candidate for a new assessor. And we wanted to maybe schedule a special meeting for that. Is that's okay? Would that be all right next Tuesday? It would be October 4th?
It has to be 6:30 because that's how long it takes him to get out of work.
That's fine.
Because why? Because it takes him that much time to get from where he works.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah. At 6:30?
I'm good with that.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, everybody? Is that all right? Okay.
20, no, it's, we're into October, right?
October 4th.
October 4th, yeah.
Oh, it's 6:30?
Yeah.
And Joni, can you make it? Would you come? Thank you.
Okay, Mary Ann?
I would have got a whole book together if I knew you'd be here. No, no.
Questions for, I was, thought that maybe we have a third degree for Mary Ann, you know?
Somebody told me she was going to be here, I would have spent all day getting some questions.
Okay, Captain? Anything?
Got some few things for you guys. Rash of car larcenies from the north end of the city. We just want to remind the residents that they, the police locked their vehicles. Most of the vehicles being targeted are unlocked. We did take one individual who was a one-man crime wave into custody on Saturday with the, run for miles several times, so we were able to take them to custody. But we have another individual that's working the south end of town that we're looking at.
Chief, could you use the mic?
I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm, yeah.
I apologize.
Thank you.
The mics are working, are they? Are they working?
Yeah. I think so. You have to talk, though.
I'm not used to this.
That is better.
Training notes. We just finished a series of active shooter preparedness training in all the Glover'sville schools. The one school we did not get was Park Terrace. And during the next break, school break, we're looking to get in there and do some more training. But we've trained- But we've trained in the high school and the middle school, Kingsborough, McNabb, and Boulevard with just about every officer we have. We also currently have in every police vehicle deployed kind of a go-bag. We have a swipe card and master keys for every police vehicle, so there will be no delay in the event of an emergency at one of those schools. So, and that's with our regular emergency equipment that we have in all patrol vehicles. Every vehicle's equipped with ballistic shields, reaching gear and all that, so we are looking to prevent any problem like we had in Texas. So, the familiarization and training in the schools is to get the officers familiar. For most of my career here, I worked nights, so I was never in Kingsborough School. So, when we trained in there, it was nice to get in there to actually see the layout of the school. That's to get the officers familiar enough, like if there's a bad guy in a school, where to go. So, and we realized a lot of training limitations that we have, plus other things that we're working with, with the school, to bolster our radio communications. When you get into some of these buildings, they are like bunkers. You can't get a signal out, so the school district was working with us to rectify that. So, it's been a good process, and we like to continue working on that. We will also be working with, there's a school safety initiative countywide, and there's a meeting on this coming Thursday at BOSI's. So, we're looking to work with all the local agencies and fire departments and things like that. Training continues. We're doing fall range this week. We're rolling out our new pepperball launching system, getting all the officers up to speed on that. We had purchased that back in March, and we're just finally rolling that out now. It's another less than lethal tool we'll have to take a suspect in custody relatively safely. We're looking to train some of our supervisors, so we're going to be shorthanded around here for probably about the next three weeks in October to get them trained up. And we are looking to cut loose some of our recruits. We have six officers in midst of different parts of field training. One officer was cut loose last week, Officer Hogaboon, and three more look to be coming off this week. Another one will be extended a little bit, and we have one in academy going to set to graduate on October 12th. There's still seven officers short, so we are actively looking for lateral candidates to help until the civil service exam comes out. The civil service exam was given on the 17th, and anywhere from 60 to 70 people took that, so we're hoping to get people, which is an improvement for us, but then you go through the process of the PT test and things like that. It generally eliminates about 60% of all applicants. We have looked, we have been working with some of the officers to do a PT prep class, so some of the people that are interested in becoming police officers are working out with our officers to try to get them to expect what to expect on a PT test and what to expect in academy. So, we're looking to get more participation in that as we move forward. About it, unless you have any questions for me.
Now, do you still have, you have your officers riding with other officers that wants to just come out of the academy?
Yes, sir. They have to do a certain amount of field training.
They're still in that process?
They're finishing it up, yes, sir. We have a couple that are still, will be finishing it up.
Was four individuals altogether? Was that four?
Yep, we have one. One was a lateral officer from the Sheriff's Department, and we had four we sent to the January session at Zone 5.
Okay. They'll be on, when will they be on so that they can work on their own?
They're being released probably by the end of this week.
Oh, that's good. That's good for you.
Yeah, it's much needed boost in the arm for us.
You've got a couple other in the pipeline besides those, you said?
We have one scheduled to graduate October 12th, and then he will finish his training. We do have a couple of lateral applicants that we're looking at, but we're actively recruiting them because they're...
Oh, you should, what, how short are you after everybody comes on board?
We'll still be seven short.
Still, still?
Yeah, which is effectively an entire platoon. So, with these recruits coming out now, we have redeployed our detectives to their regular duties. They were reassigned temporarily to help our staffing shortage, so they're coming back to their regular assignments. So, we're still struggling to fill, there's like every department in the country.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
I just wonder how you work, because I know that you had several people that were...
Yes, sir.
Coming back, coming into the force that weren't there yet.
And we still might lose more, unfortunately. The state police are gonna come visiting again and probably take a couple of other good guys from us.
Let's hope not.
So, let's hope not. But we can't control that.
How many agencies can pull from that test?
So, it'll be the Sheriff's Department, Johnstown, and us. So, and hopefully that's good for us. I think the Sheriff's Department's full, and Johnstown has one opening. So, hopefully we can get our lion's share of those guys. But that's going to cost, you know, significant outfit and train these officers, plus if we send them in the January academy, it's going to take, you know, nine months before they're street-ready. So, it's a lot, it's a long investment and process before they're ready to hit the street. So, that's why we would like some laterals, where we could, you know, we have a lot of young officers, we need some experience in there to kind of have that middle bench of experience, so.
I really liked your idea of the training, our preparation training for people.
We found it helped.
Yeah.
So, trying to, I mean, the kids just don't know what to experience, what they're going to experience and what to expect.
Yeah.
So, we have our, you know, one of our PT instructors and some of the officers that are up there actually running with them, doing the push-ups and sit-ups with them and showing them this is what we got to do. And even some of the older dinosaurs in that department are up there running with them, so, not me, but...
[laughing]
Would you want to go, Mary Ann? We can go up there.
No, thank you.
So, yeah, it's been, we hope to continue that as we go, so.
You know, I heard that Glover'sville Police Department has the reputation of being the fastest route to the state police. And that's a compliment, but by the same token, it's really a challenge, isn't it, Chief? Any other questions of Captain Carigoli? Okay. All right, Don.
Good afternoon. I am going to look, I know there's a lot of millings at that lot on McNabb. They have done more milling this year than any other year. It's been the depository for it for a long time, but I do have some folks that are looking for them. The landfill was looking for quite a bit, and I think the county was as well, but I'll look into the, reducing the amount that's there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I say something about that?
Of course.
Before that, and it's only been a couple years that they were doing that, because before that, it was all weeds. Finally got them to clean that up, and then they did this. Their view from their homes is that. And then they have another company with trucks and roll-offs, and they have to look at that too. So, I think it's their view to see that across the street is not, you know, helpful for them.
Yeah.
I want to just mention that that is one of the pieces of property that is in what we called the Crescent.
Yes.
Which was, you know, in our Boa Brownfield Opportunity Area and also in our LWRP. And the ultimate goal for that site is to actually do the Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental assessments on it, make sure that it's clean, and actually get that into public hands for the building of single-family houses. So, it's our goal to develop that into R1.
I was concerned when I saw the pile high. And I did see it.
We were, we were there, we looked at that with the group of consultants we had, and people were, they all thought that that had tremendous potential because of the stream going right there on the north side.
Pretty.
And it's flat, and it could be really a nice place for new houses.
Yep.
So, what do people use the millings for?
Driveways. Parking lot repair, driveway repair. Some places use it for fill when they're building. Don, do we have any use for those millings ourselves? Limited. Limited? Yeah, we don't really use them as much as some other, some other places do. I usually use number-two crush. It's compactable. It doesn't settle.
I don't even know if our citizens realize, they could purchase that. And they, you probably should let people know that they can, because I have, I did a whole driveway, worked out wonderfully.
Yeah, and we have, we have quite a bit, so...
Fairly reasonable, too.
I mean, I, I'll look at what the going rate is, I'll cut it in half.
Yeah.
Because we have so much.
Hit it out there before winter, maybe some people would take it.
Yep.
Bottom line, our goal is to clean that out.
Clean it up.
Clean it up, yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that would be the, that would be the goal.
Yeah. Park work. So, most folks are aware, we're redoing the entrance to Darling Field. We laid one side of the sidewalk today.
Yeah.
It's looking nice.
Very nice. I looked at it today myself.
The team did an excellent job. They get a lot of on-the-job training from our foreman, Jason Munn, is extremely good at what he does. That'll be continuing throughout the fall. It's a, it's a big park and needs a lot of work. Our contractor started taking down and is almost complete with the trees that are around the tennis court. Then I can repair the fence. There was no real sense in repairing the fence until the dangerous trees and limbs were taken down. So, that'll, that'll be coming soon. Elk Street Park, the main part of that project is all complete. The sidewalks are in, the fence is up, the lighting is up and operational. We've done a lot of landscaping work there. That's going to continue through the fall. The next thing I want to do there is, excuse me, as you're looking at it from, as you're looking at the park from Fulton, on the left side of the basketball area is two cement pads, concrete pads, that are not very useful. So, I talked to Mayor DeSantis, and we're going to put one big level deck over that with a nice railing, and it should really boost the appearance and the usefulness of that area, because right now it's of no use. I don't even know why the pads are there. So, that's on the next phase of that.
Actually, I know why the pads are there. It was part of the original design, and they were going to put chairs on the lower level. On the upper level, they were going to do something else with grills and all that kind of stuff. They were going to paint on the, on the surface games for kids to play. So, it was kind of a whole big thing that's, I think, not worth saving. I don't think the idea was necessarily the best of the best, but it was the one we were given. I also, if you're in that area, we've had repeated requests. I know Tammy knows, Jenny knows. Sorry, Jenny, I'll get it right one day. Jenny knows this, that the citizens who use, especially the basketball court, would like a much bigger place to sit underneath.
Oh, we've spoken about a bigger pavilion or a gazebo that's there.
Yeah.
That's something I'll be looking at for next year, possible maybe the year after, but I really want to get some basics in there, because that, the concrete pads are graded, so they're not really useful. And then we'll maybe bring some picnic tables or benches or something for that area. The gazebo that's there is pretty small.
Yeah. I think it might be more of a priority, just a thought.
Yes, ma'am.
I trust your judgment.
Thank you.
However.
Leaving in the tree removal, that'll continue. We're bringing down quite a few dangerous trees in the area. Should be done by the end of next week, weather permitting. For, as for streets, the learning curve for the crack seal program is about over. The team's pretty good at it. It's just building a, a working relationship with each other. It's, it's a little more complex than it sounds, so it'll look a little cleaner. Everything's a little hard to do at first. We'll make some repairs to some of the first work we did. We're going to have a second push on pothole repair before the end of the season. The PPST is complete, and the mill and fill is well underway. As soon as that is over, which is probably going to be this week, we'll start the striping program, get all the roads striped back and have them looking pleasant.
Here at Kingsville Avenue?
Yes, sir.
I've offered some, you're going to do... Ask a couple questions about what you just spoke about?
Absolutely.
The trees, now, are they going to end up down at the landfill area where they put the brush and stuff, and you're going to allow people to take some of that wood or not this year?
Yeah, there's, we're continually dumping larger logs down there. The smaller limbs we chipped up right on site, and that's dumped down there as well. If people want wood chips, they're, they're free, they can go get them. And there are a number of large logs that can be cut up, transported out, free of charge.
And the fence that's at Darling Field, the metal fence, you said you're taking that down?
We took, we took the barbed wire down.
Leaving the fence up, the metal fence is staying there where the front is?
Well, with the, with the actual gate, the front gate on Kingsborough?
Yeah, there's, there's the pillars, the gate, and then there's the fence.
So, the fence is already down.
Fence is down.
That's down. I don't plan on putting it back. It really served no actual purpose.
No, I know. But it was nice, but it was, I realized that. But what are you doing with that?
With the fence? Sending it to Borns to recycle.
Would you get rid of that fence?
I'm sorry?
Somebody wanted it. Somebody wanted that fence. Would you get rid of it, or are we just going to go ahead and scrap it? Is it worth keeping?
No.
No?
No.
That was my question. And I noticed that several of the streets that are now paved, we don't, we have a big dip between the manhole cover and the street now on several of these. And I know in the past, we put those rings in there to bring that up. So, are we going to be doing that?
Yeah, before the PPST was placed, we did place riser rings in, as they're laying the pavement down. Sometimes they have to adjust the amount to a little bit more, a little bit less. Where the manholes are too low, we will go back through and put bigger risers in.
Pretty low.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Do we have any updates on Code Blue, what's happening, the shelter?
Everything's going as planned. I can't say there's any actual updates. The contractor is working on the shower in there.
Oh, that's an update.
Yep, that is underway. The partition wall's been removed. I'm hoping next week we can move some of the collateral that's in there so we can get the floor painted in the, in the big Code Blue area. I'll be going out next week and purchasing the needed items for the kitchen, the washer and dryer for clothing.
Did we find out what kind of washer and dryer we need?
It's, yeah, it's not regulated, so we can...
Wonderful.
I'll just buy a high-quality washer and dryer that'll last and not be absorbently expensive.
What about the splits? How's that going?
Good. They should be delivered to the contractor tomorrow, so then he's pretty quick. So, I can't say he'll be installing them tomorrow. He'll probably be getting everything staged, and hopefully it'll start this week.
Wonderful.
But we're, we're on track. If you were to walk in right now, it might not seem that way, but...
It's probably a little bit in shambles.
It is. And the other thing we're doing, I don't know if I mentioned it two weeks ago or not, we're going to replace the whole sidewalk in front of the Code Blue shelter. There's no sense in...
It'd get easier for snow blowing.
Yep. As we were building, while looking to put the ramp in, there was no sense in saving that sidewalk. It's, it's just in shambles. So, we'll demo it, we'll do it all in-house.
It'll be ready, ready for election?
I hope so. It's supposed to be.
Yeah, the early voting starts...
October 26th.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's the next project.
Okay.
So, it is the next cement project, so I don't see why we won't make that.
Only three, three weeks away.
There's actually a team coming to inspect that this Friday. So, it'll still be under construction, but they'll see where everything's going to go and all of that for the Code Blue. And of course, one of those team members is with the election, the Board of Elections, so we'll have, we'll have that ready for them, hopefully. Okay, any other questions for Don? Okay, Brent?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Short tonight. I know I discussed last meeting, we were trying to close out this FTA, try and review. Good news, we closed it out, no findings for transit from federal, so that's all done. So, as soon as I got ready to take a breath, and then I got the email about the next round So, as soon as I got ready to take a breath, and then I got the email about the next round of 5311 funding. So, with that, I sent an email to DOT to kind of get a placemat of where the funding that I've applied for over the last couple, last couple cycles and how the prices have gone up. This should finalize all of that, and it'll probably, my plan is for it to end up with us having a new roof, new parking lot, and during this, I'll probably order three or four more buses too, because I know how long it likes them to take to deliver to me. So, but other than that, I don't have anything for the group unless you have anything for me.
When you say new roof, you're talking about taking it off and starting over. Good. Glad to hear that.
The only section that I don't intend on doing that is right over the admin area. It's already got two layers on it. It's not the problem. The problem is the rest of it.
The entrance, I know that that's a problem.
No, it's, it's the, the walls that are up on top of the roof. They were just never done correctly. There's like 500 gallons of caulk up there. It's working really well.
I've repaired it several times and it still leaks, so...
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else for Brent? Attorney Rose?
When are we gonna be turning the air conditioning kind of off or down or something?
We're already passed on.
Crazy.
We've had it on for some time.
Already passed on. No more Don ones.
I know, they are nice.
So, the only new...
Didn't know you had a bodyguard. I thought it was maybe on that side, but not on that side. Sorry.
That's okay. The only new news I have tonight is that we received title to our, to another 19A property yesterday. So, that was A Eagle Street. So, that, we got the court order signed by the judge yesterday. So, that's all that I have new tonight, unless you have questions for me. No?
We'll think of them later, probably.
I just very quickly want to give an event update. We're right in between two events. We just finished Bacon Brew Fest. We couldn't have gotten more lucky with the weather. We had like days and days of rain, and then Saturday was a perfect fall day and days and days of rain after that. And that definitely helped our attendance at the event. It was definitely successful. It's not a huge fundraising event for us. We sell wristbands into the Beer Garden, which essentially the goal is to make enough of that to pay our musicians. We definitely exceeded that on top of the concession sales, which offsets our other expenses, and then the vendor fees, of course, which has been huge. So, it was a successful event definitely for us. And next Saturday is our final, well, not our final event of the year, but our final festival of the year, and that's Fall Fest. That's at Trail Station Park from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This is our free event for families. All of the activities that the Recreation Commission puts on is free. We have pumpkin painting for the kids. We have the bounce houses, which are also free for the children. And then at 3:30, we have the trick-or-treat event where we hand out candy to all of our vendors and the kids trick-or-treat to all of each individual vendor. And then there's a costume contest as well, where ribbons and trophies are handed out to the children. It's a really good event. It's kind of our give-back event to the community for supporting us for the year, and that's why there's no cost associated with anything that we do. So, again, that's our final festival of the year, and we hope that everybody will come out and join us.
Any questions for Jenny? All right, thank you. Is there anything else anyone would like to add before we go into our legislation?
I'd like to do our approval of minutes.
Approval of minutes. Ah, approval of minutes, yes. Thank you, Parliamentarian Sherkowski. We have the minutes for the regular session on August 23rd and the minutes for the work session on September 13th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for 8:23 and 9:13.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, first thing on the, in legislation is local law number one. This is a local law sponsored by Councilwoman Bachelor. It's a local law amending the city charter of the City of Glover'sville pertaining to the residency qualifications for appointed city officials. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, one opposed. Okay. Then ordinance number one is an ordinance offered by Councilman Sherkowski. It's an ordinance modifying Section 225-2 of the City Code, and this is with respect to the composition of the panel. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, all right. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? R1 is a resolution offered by Councilman Sherkowski. It's a resolution setting the Administrative Appeals Panel composition per the City Code 25-2. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
R2 is a resolution offered by Councilman Sherkowski. It's a resolution authorizing the Glover'sville Police Captain to execute an addendum with the Glover'sville and Large School District for the school resource officer for 2022-23 school year. Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? R3 is a resolution offered by Councilman at Large Peters. It's a resolution authorizing proposal within Hoover, whoever Brewer for fire department building improvements, and this would be a consultant, a construction consultant. Is there a second to that? Okay. Any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Last one is R4, a resolution offered by Councilman Sherkowski and seconded by Councilman Simons. It's a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Finance to execute a budget modification for the paving program for 2022. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go back to our old business. With respect to the DPW facility, is there any further update that you want to give us, Don, on that? It seems to be on schedule from what I understand.
It seems to be.
We have our fingers crossed that it's on schedule.
We do. So, the DPW is doing a lot of the work in-house right now. We're doing the demo on the inside of the 1974 building, getting ready for the remodel. Most of the outside work that we can do is done at this point. We're, I met with the contractors today. Right now, we're really just waiting to be, go to the next step. The asbestos abatement, I'm hoping, is gonna start late next, late this week. They had to do a 10-day notification to the DOL. I didn't realize that was something they had to do, but they do. So, that's why it's starting a little late. But that's about it.
Any questions? The, the DPW has been doing a lot of work over there that has been actually saving us considerable amount of money off the construction costs, so it's really good to see that.
Thank you.
You know, I'm, I'm just wondering, I, we, we were over there, we met with the neighboring owner about the boundary line agreement and all of that. I think there's a, there was an exchange. I think there had to be. We met with the surveyor. Did, did we get this survey back from him yet?
Not yet. If I didn't get it back by tomorrow, I was gonna reach out
Yeah.
and see where we were at with that.
Okay. Okay, the demolitions, we're gonna be talking about the two bids that we got for the multi-site demolitions in the executive session. We want to take a look at that. Jesse's on, our consultant, will be available by phone if we need him when we talk about that. The other thing is the spray park. I did reach out to Parks and Rec, Sunshine Jenkins, and to see where we were going. I actually copied, you know, on the email that I sent her, I copied Assemblyman Smullen and, and our lobbyist as well, so... So, see, I, I'm, I'm sure I'll get an answer back pretty quickly.
It looks like they...
I'm hoping there'll be some definitive amount.
Are they sending out somebody for, to assess the property? Was that, was that the last?
No, the, the, the only thing that's pending is, we, on May 9th, we sent them our map and, and all the deeds, the deed history to show and to prove that the property that's gonna be improved and expanded is owned by the city, which is necessary because it has to be public park property perpetually in order for them to, to allow the grant. When we, when we sent that on May 9th, they told us it would be four to six weeks, and that we would get an approval or a request for additional information. We haven't heard anything since then, so that's why we...
Somebody has to physically come out and inspect the site?
No, they, they, actually, they have to review, the, the legal team has to review the deed, the documents that we gave. They don't actually have to come out.
So, it's been about five months?
Four months, I think. Almost five, yeah. Okay. And that's it for old business. Now, we just have those executive sessions.
I make a motion, we go into executive session under New York Public Officers' Law, Section 105, subsection 1E.
Okay, is there a second to that? Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I also make a motion to allow our city attorney and attorney Goldberg to attend.
And also, Don, our GPW director?
And also, Don.
And, and Jesse's on, if we can get him on the phone?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, we're back in public session after three executive sessions. And I'll entertain a motion to award the bid for the demolitions. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second that for Jackson, for Jackson...
Jackson.
For Jackson.
To choose Jackson demolition as the contractor. Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion?
I'll second it. Second's made.
You're gonna third it? I think there's a... Randy seconded it. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Aye.
Opposed?